But my tongue is burnt. Okay, there we are. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Thursday, October 17th, 2019 workshop. The only thing on our agenda this morning is the agenda review for our October 22nd regular agenda meeting, our action meeting next week. So we shall begin. If everyone can have your agenda up for next week, the 22nd. I'm sorry, I have to refresh mine. Okay. No questions, I believe, about any of the order of business. Ms. Fisher, you're doing the Italian-American heritage?
Yes, evidently.
Thank you. And-
I'll make pasta and bring it with me.
Oh, no, that's all right. That's okay. If you forget it, Susan is awesome at helping you out with it. Will we have, we'll have a student? Do we know, Susan?
Yes.
We will have a student here. Okay. I have a question. The, under executive services, we have National American Indian Heritage Month. Are we going to read that resolution or not? No?
I think that'll be next meeting. I think we approve it at one meeting and then read it at the next meeting.
I'm sorry. It did say approval. Sorry. Thank you for that. Okay, so moving on down to business services. Yes. We were handed a list, and there are some questions on here. So F1, there is a question, and F1 is approval to remove items from official property records. And we have, Superintendent, you ready for that first one?
I'm ready.
Go ahead and read it to give you a second or two more. We're on, we're on business services.
Dr. Decemore, thank you. Come on up. I'm sorry. They, I have my list of things where I know who's going to be coming up, and they can't get that document up right now.
So they'll just, they'll just come up?
They'll just come up. So, Dr. Decemore.
We know the order of business.
We know the order. Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning.
This one was on the defibrillators beyond repair. And I don't know if you saw the question?
I did see the question. So the question was, I think, why are we replacing them? Don't even have batteries.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So the question was, why do we have to replace them? Can we just replace the batteries? Or when were they purchased? Those were purchased between, most of them between 2006 and 2008. There were a couple that were purchased a little after that, but most were between '06 and '08. Those were the original models. And after conversation with our athletic department, Mr. LaRosa, you can no longer get batteries for that very old model. And so the, so the new, we updated them with new models of the AEDs.
Oh, that's good. That's a scary thing.
Because when you need it, it needs to work.
So that answers the lifespan and cost. The question had, why 922 defibrillators? That's hard to say. Has a cost of $13.95.
Oh, one of them was like $100 difference. They were all kind of $12.95, one was $13.95. I'm, I'm not sure of the answer to that. I'm not sure, you know, because we would have to go back and pull all of the old purchase orders to see, you know, what the difference was or whether it was brought. They weren't brought, bought, purchased all at exactly the same time. So it could be that for one, there was one small difference, or it could have been a shipping charge that was charged to one as opposed to all the others. So I'd, I'd have to go back and pull all of those purchase orders to determine what that $100 difference was, which I did not have a chance to do before we got here this morning. But I'm happy to do that and send you the email about what that difference was.
Was this your question?
No, yeah, that's fine. I just noticed it because when I was going down, I seen the defibrillators, and I thought it was, it's like, I know we don't use them that often.
Right.
So, so that's something that we have to have.
Right.
And what is the lifespan for us to purchase these? And how long do they last that we're going to have to just repurchase them because they're outdated? And then I noticed that 13, and everything else was 12.
It was one of those little differences.
And that's the only reason.
No, it was, it was in, it was in our property records as that amount. So it wasn't a mistake, mistake on the spreadsheet itself.
Okay.
That did come from our property records, records and people's office. But why there was a difference in that cost to the other ones, I had to go pull all the purchase orders to figure, find out why the difference.
So we're looking at them being about 10 years lifespan.
Yes.
For the new ones that we purchased now, we can replace the batteries? Or no?
So five years is the average lifespan?
It's five years?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Did you want to come speak a little bit to that and say, "LaRosa"?
And while he's on his way up, Ms. Fisher, you-
And that's just what I was going to ask. What is the actual lifespan? Because I think that we need to know that, and we need to update them periodically so that in the event it is needed, it's ready to go. Yeah.
Yes. And we have a process in place that the athletic trainers do at the schools to make sure that all the devices are functioning. Because every time you, every time you have to use the device, and we haven't used them very many times, but every time you use it and you use the pads, those pads are one-time use. You've got to replace them immediately. But in, in the schools right now, we have newer models than the ones that we had. The ones that are on the inventory are the original model that was purchased, I think, well, they were purchased by Mr. Wiseman back in the day.
Back in the days.
But, but that's the original model that has been in the schools. And what happened with that model got to the point, and this has all happened like in the last year or so, we weren't able to find batteries for those devices.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't, why would we keep them that long anyway? I mean, because that's not standard.
Well, they were still usable. They were still-
Really?
Yeah, they were still, they were still functional.
Functional?
Because there's a test that the athletic trainers would do on the devices-
Okay.
-to make sure that they were working properly. But what, what happened was is, is we got to the point where, as I said up to about a year ago, we couldn't find replacement batteries for them. But we have since put newer devices out in the schools.
Okay.
Okay.
So this was one of the issues, I think, that came up when I went to that summer conference for the athletic associations across the country. And I remember talking to you about this. This was not long outline of stuff I sent you.
Yes.
And we are following the national guidelines for AEDs. I remember that being the outcome of the conversation that we had.
Yeah, that was one of the things we talked about.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Everyone, thank you. The other question was about ID printing. I don't, I'm not sure whose question.
That was me too.
Was that you? Do you want to go ahead?
I had noticed that that was, you were unable to locate that, the badge, the badge maker. And I was concerned if that's out there somewhere, is someone out there duplicating IDs? Or are they able to make an ID to get into any location?
Not necessarily able to, just with the printer, because there's other soft, you know, there's software that we use to make our badges, and the printers just use to print them. So the printer by itself is not enough to make a, to make a badge.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just going to add that benches also have, they have a chip inside that identifies them. So just having a printer can't allow somebody to duplicate one of the chip for access.
Thank you. I could just see a bunch of IDs floating around.
Not today.
No, thank you.
Not on your watch.
Tomorrow, either, right?
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Just occurred to me. We have a lot of obsolete computers. Are we still recycling these in, in some way?
Yes, ma'am. So what we do with our obsolete equipment is we bring it in, we grade it to see what condition it's in. Now, some of it will get reused within the district because we use it as like kiosks, things like that, that we don't need as much power. The remaining equipment is either, some of it's donated. We donate to our charter schools. But the, the majority of it is sold, and we reclaim that revenue that comes back in.
Okay. Are we still doing that program, putting the money toward a teacher?
Yes, ma'am.
Salary fund? Okay. I'm just curious how that fund, if we're, if the money is piling up in there. I know an obsolete computer's not worth that much, but hey, it's worth something, right?
Well, we donated, or we donated, we contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars to reclaim, reclaimed equipment this year.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask, and this may be a Dr. Decemore question, is, is that like a, an item on the budget that we could see the reclaimed items and where it went?
Yeah. So, so we track the dollars from the, from the recycled or the sold computers in a special project. But in the information, I'm trying to think, in the information that you receive in the budget book, you weren't necessarily able to, you wouldn't be able to-
That's why I asked.
-pick that out individually. So if you wanted that, we certainly could point that out individually. But based on the information we're putting together right now, no, there wouldn't be a way you'd be able to see that.
In one of your updates, maybe you can touch on it and say it's, it's in this area?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, that's, that's a good thing for the community to see how we're recycling money and putting it where we need it.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I comment?
Yes.
So I was really excited to see the, all of the smart boards that we are retiring, because that means we're updating our classrooms through the use of grant money and half penny sales tax money, right? Is it through those two things? So to see all those whiteboards, whiteboard, or smart board after smart, like that whole list, that was really exciting to me. So thank you for your work there.
Well, do you mind? I mean, I think you ought to share a little bit more about that project, because I think it's really, it's really neat. I mean, what, what you can do with the new boards.
This, that's very interesting. I remember as a teacher how excited I was when I first got a whiteboard in my classroom. And now you're taking them away.
But we're replacing them with-
I know, with something better.
-newer technology. And you see that as part of our agenda item today. We have one of the projects that, that we have ongoing, starting this fiscal year, is the replacement of what we call the Atlas implementation. And the Atlas implementation originally started as the smart board, audio system, document camera, podium PC up in front of the classroom. And we are now, they've lived a very, very good life. Those things, believe it or not, the, the smart boards made it eight to 10 years in a lot of cases. But now, since the public has decided to provide us a little more revenue, we're replacing those with interactive panels. So the classrooms, over the next few years, all of the classrooms will be replaced with 86-inch interactive panels that still have the interactivity and the pens and everything that up at the front of the classroom. But instead of a projector in the teacher's face and a lot of the maintenance headaches that go along with projectors, we're going to be replacing those with, with Promethean panels. So it's a, we're also, as we move forward, looking at more flexibility in the classroom. So the devices we're putting in today will support our goal in the future of having teachers mobile with devices around. You know, right now, our biggest challenge, of course, is battery life on the devices you carry around the room. But as that evolves, we're positioning ourselves to be ready for that so that the teacher, because we don't want the teacher tethered to the, to the podium. We want the teacher to be able to interact with the students and facilitate throughout the classroom.
Do the new systems have the ability to do, I forget what you call it with the voting, you know, how the kids can, can-
The, the student response?
Student response system. Is that a part of it?
The student response software continues to work on, on these systems. So the, the software is separate from the, the panel itself, but we do include the, the newer software. We do include upgraded audio enhancement systems so that the teacher has a microphone, can be heard throughout the classroom. So all of those things that we've done before, you know, we're bringing in the newer technologies that are similar, but then the next, well, literally three generations ahead of what we had in classrooms, so.
Yes, ma'am.
What's, what's the timeline for the replacements? And obviously, you can't do it everywhere at once. How, how did you set the priorities?
So the, the timeline will be five-year implementation for all the classrooms. So we're on a, on a typical five-year rotation. We'll get a little bit longer out of these devices. We've negotiated seven-year contracts. So once we get that five-year implementation done, we'll spread out over a little bit more time.
And installing?
Installing will be five years for the whole.
Oh, install, installing takes five years, really?
Oh, yeah. It's roughly 6,500 boards. And every classroom has to have a, has to be inspected and have a specific scope, because we're hanging 186-pound device on the walls. So we have to adapt to whatever material is in the rooms, plus taking down the other, other equipment. So each one is, is literally a unique scope and has to be inspected for safety in that. So there's, there's a lot that goes into engineering that, that transition. As far as the prioritization, we were already on a, on a rotation schedule. We're continuing that rotation schedule. And to tell you how that was originally decided, and this was, you know, generations ago with, with our curriculum folks, is we started with our Title I schools, and then we, and then we implemented the rest of the schools. They kind of determined that. So what we're doing is continuing this year with that schedule, and then working with our academic folks, we'll prioritize the next few years to see how they would like to do that. And some of our implementations, for example, safety in that, they prioritize from secondary down. That has not been the case typically when it comes to interactive technology. We kind of go into various levels in the same year. And of course, we also look at the size of the schools, because the larger school, we do fewer schools with the larger schools. So we try to balance a mixture of the large schools, medium, and smaller schools within each year.
Thank you.
Kind of on that same vein, though, you said you'd do Title I schools first.
We, we started the implementation of Title I schools first. So we continued on that schedule. However, remember, Title I schools have changed. And the reason that we're staying on that schedule is because those school, the schools that were scheduled for this year already have that equipment that's aging out. If we reprioritize now, we will have failing equipment in, in those schools. So that's what we're working on rearranging over the next few years. We actually accelerated this project a little faster than anticipated. We hadn't anticipated getting into full-blown implementation until the next fiscal. However, we were able to establish a new package and negotiate a really, really good deal and start the implementation this year. So when we start reprioritizing, whatever that prioritization will be, will begin in FI 21. The schools that are this year are the ones that have the five-year-old equipment coming out this year.
Would be the first, because that, that's what I was thinking, especially even with Title I, starting with high school first, because they'd be the, you know, the-
Yeah, typically, your, your high schools are fewer Title I.
Would be, would be first on the list.
Well, they have fewer Title I in high school. So we have, we do maintain, and I'd have to check the, the current list of Title I.
Right. Oh, no, that's okay. I don't need that type of detail. I'm just thinking in five years, you're going to be back up here doing this again.
Well, in five years, hopefully, we're, we're going to be spreading this out to seven over the, on the following refresh, because we do have seven-year warranty on the new equipment.
But with the change in technology, it's not-
We'll be looking at whatever is the current technology at that time.
Okay. Yes. So then, because we have the new schools coming up, they're going to, of course, receive those first, because you're not going to put old stuff in there. So that pushes the other schools back, because we have new schools that are being built?
The new schools don't impact the schedule on the existing schools. So the existing school project is a parallel project. So the existing schools are under implementation right now. The, the new schools, of course, we won't be putting the technology into the new schools for several months. For, for example, we're going to have Staging, Triple M, and so forth. So they will get that package, they'll get the, the current package at the time that the new school is built. But that does not impact our existing schools, because we are-
It's already in process.
-running those as two, two parallel projects.
Okay. And I believe we've just seen that in Lehigh, right? Lehigh Senior?
Lehigh Senior was the first school to have that implementation, because it, just the timing was great for them. They were under remodel at the time that, that we had established the new system. And so they were the first school with this implementation. They're sort of our beta school for working through, you know, testing and helping us learn things that we will use to implement at the, the next schools, which will be starting as early as next month.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. Were you going to enlighten us more?
Good morning. I'd like to, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'd like to quantify a really, really good deal for you, just, just for a moment. So you mentioned the, you know, over 6,500, you know, panels that we're going to be putting up. I think it was around 153 panels in the renovated section of, of Lehigh. Sometimes you don't hear the backstory behind the, the actual final amount, negotiated amount. We negotiate heavily in ISD. So Brian Roach's fantastic work across multiple vendors there led us to a little over $3,000 savings per panel. Also, an onsite trainer, seven years of additional, of, of warranty work. If you do the math there, that's over $20 million in savings on our, on our project. Even though it is a sales tax project, I think it's very important for the public to know, as well as you to know, that that's the diligence that we do on the backend to get, to get the best price. You don't always hear that story in the final number that's in budget. So just wanted to kind of let you know that.
And what was the final that you saved?
It was over 20 million. It was almost, almost 24 million.
Can, can we be sure to include a presentation or that information at our next ISOC update so that the ISOC committee knows about that savings? That would be huge for them.
That's great. Thank you.
One, one other thing?
Yes.
Is, is there going to be a huge learning curve for the teachers in moving from smart board to the new system? Or is it?
No, it's actually a relatively small learning curve. And the nice thing is we can better customize this per level. So we do have new software, but we also have been provided as part of the deal, an onsite trainer and support person. So as-
That was my next question.
Yeah, this person lives with us for the next five years.
Ah, okay.
And we were very fortunate in being able to select a trainer that we have worked with through another company, IDE, in the past. So she knows our schools. She's going to hit the ground running. And she's going to assist not only with the, the learning the, the new system, but also helping them transition their files. And the other really great thing is that we noticed that we have a lot more interactivity as far as, as far as using the activities at the lower grade levels in ESE than we do in the secondary. In the secondary, they tend to use it a little bit differently. And the software allows us to customize a little bit better per level, so that the, the secondary teachers that tend to use it more for a digital whiteboard and collaboration with the devices in the classroom-
Yeah.
-will have that capability. But the elementary levels that tend to use it up in front of the classroom more with the students will also be able to continue to do so.
Thank you.
And when all else fails, you ask a student.
I used to do that, too.
Yes. Here, fix this thing. Okay. So if nothing else, then we're on to human resources, which is G. We do have one question on G1 approval, personal recommendations. Who, I'm not sure whose question. If you-
Me.
Okay. Would you-
Morning.
Hi. Would you like to discuss that?
Sure. I think the question was about the candidate for the Astero Assistant Principal position. He was admitted to the pool on September 23rd. He's from Collier County. We do reciprocity with our surrounding districts. If they're in their pool in those districts, we admit them into our pool. He had applied for the position at Astero. And we, you know, whenever somebody applies that isn't currently in our pool, we contact them to see what the situation is, because we're always looking to recruit. And he was, and we confirmed he was in the Assistant Principal pool in Collier County. So we put him in ours, and he got hired.
So did the, the principal, the current principal at Astero have a chance to interview him as well and, and decide-
Oh, it was his, his choice.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we don't, we, that's, like I said, we have decentralized hiring. So they do that at the, at the school site.
Well, I know sometimes if somebody has a transfer, they may or may not get the 100% stamp of approval by the principal. I've, I've heard that anyway from a couple principals.
Well, that used to be the case, but we have, that has not been the case for the past two years.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I just lost my screen. It's coming back.
I don't have a question, but I'm not going to have ti, I don't think we're going to have time to make board reports. There, there was something I wanted to talk about with Trey with his hiring recommendation. Trey, whenever I read your agenda items, I feel like I've been punched in the gut by the dollar amount. And then I read the detail, and what comes to light for me is how you are truly implementing a world-class plan for information systems and technology in this district. And having met with you last week about the hire that, that will come before us for approval on Tuesday, I was reminded of the fact that one of the reasons why you're doing such a good job is because people want to work for you. You've created a culture over there where people want to come to work- You've created a culture over there where people want to come to work, and it's because every time you go to the podium to talk to us, you point out, um, the accomplishments of the people that work for you, instead of taking it on yourself. And, um, you know, I have great faith and confidence in the superintendent, as you know, but I do believe that the people in information systems are your people. They're there because they like working for you. And, um, I just really wanted to, I wanted to point that out during my board comments today, because when I read your agenda items, I just, the number is so big, but then, you know, the, the gravity of what you're doing for this district and how you've placed us, um, in front of other districts, not just across the state, but across the nation, it's very much appreciated, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Keep it up.
I appreciate that, and I, I do value greatly the people that work in ISD.
I know you do, I know you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the one question I have, and I, and tell me if I'm wrong, on the admin positions, we had discussed at one point putting, um, resumes, uh, with them. Did we decide not to do that for the admin positions?
Yeah, what we're doing is we're, we're doing resumes of like director or principal with the board updates, is what we've been doing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other questions on human resources?
Which, by the way, um, it, I think I discussed this briefly with the chair. Uh, I will be bringing a Good Cause item, uh, to, which is a personal recommendation, uh, which I'll continue to talk to you individually, but will provide, um, the resume, um, of that individual in tomorrow's update.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on then to H, anything on information systems?
Any comments, questions?
Moving on to I, um, operations. And, let me just see, where's curse? Okay, um, anyone have anything in operations? Oh, I, we do have, um, I five, and who was curse? Okay, Ms. Patricia, you want to address that?
Just curious as to why we had a four hundred thousand dollar unanticipated increase in painting? Did something happen? Was it more mold than usual or something?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are bringing forward our painting services bid with both an increase and the renewal, um, two for one. So the increase is we've added four projects for painting schools in their interior, exterior thing, and it's the services and the materials to, uh, complete the tasks. And now that we're, you know, getting into our first year of sales tax revenue, and we're looking at our projects for capital and sales tax expenditure, we realize we have the opportunity to take on those painting initiatives, so we were able to, within the, um, the current period for painting services, add four more schools. They'll be funded with capital dollars, and as we're able to use our sales tax revenue in other places, this helps alleviate some of the burden on our capital budget. So the, um, priorities for adding those four schools were added to this current.
Can you tell us what the four schools are?
Uh, they're listed on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even look, okay.
So if we could also include that with ISOC, I'm not going to be there next time, but, um, one of the platforms or one of the educational issues that, um, we communicated to the public was that we had fallen off a regular maintenance schedule, and it looks like this is a little bit of getting back on to that.
That's right.
Um, pro, being proactive. So if we could let ISOC know that as well, I think that's important information.
Absolutely, great idea.
I guess, and, and the kind of a out-there question would be, though, if we have the tax to do more maintenance, could it not have been taken out of that instead of out of capital and then moving? Do, does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Right, so, so, um, what we do is we look at, um, our least restrictive fund source. So we always spend our grant funds first and our sales tax funds, and then the capital funds. So, um, there is a balance of the capital and sales tax, and, uh, we have budgeted for certain sales tax, um, projects to be initiated. And so then as we go back and look at our capital budget, we're then able to bring forward these additional projects. So, um, rest assured, we're managing our expenditures, uh, or, uh, projects with our sales tax funds, and, um, this is the balancing act that we're doing.
One of the new initiatives that we've discussed briefly with you, which we'll be bringing back to discuss a little bit more detail, is, is, um, Kathy Eball and Ken Savage have a capital improvement prod, process that they have implemented, working with, um, the Business Services Division and, and our Operations Division, um, to really produce a document that puts out what capital projects that we're going to be working on and provides a timeline as to when those are going to be constructed, that provides, you know, more detail than what you, what we were getting in just our five-year capital plan. Um, so this will, if I'm a school principal, you know, I'm going to have a good idea in terms of when I will be coming up in terms of a rotation or when my project, um, whether it's a major project or a minor project. Um, some of the minor projects under two hundred thousand dollars, they'll come up and, and, and review on an annual basis. Major projects will be, um, something that they'll be planned out over the, the period of the, of the actual plan. I don't, Kathy, if you want to add to that, um, but that's, uh.
If there's any question.
Okay.
Well, the, a, and what I understand, you're bringing back, let's say, the, um, principals being able to present capital project requests?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, maybe you can kind of, uh, address that a little bit?
Sure, so we're going to be doing a full presentation about the capital improvement plan, uh, new process at the meeting on the thirty-first, um, when we also will be asking you to evaluate what will be a, a series of five goals and objectives, um, by which we will evaluate our projects. So, um, so that is forthcoming at your next, uh, your next meeting. But, um, the, the quick of it is, the new process does a few things. One, it, it improves the openness of the process and accountability of the process so that people, um, starting with yourselves, understand where a project is. So first I want to say that there's going to be large projects and small projects. Um, so I'm going to focus on the large projects component of it, because that's the part that you will be involved with most. Um, so as part of the five-year capital planning process, we will do a five-year capital improvement plan, which will identify where the projects sit on the five-year plan. Our goal is that if it's a year four or five project, that's a project we've identified, but we don't have a lot of clarity about the project. Um, we're thinking about it, we're starting to deliberate, it might be something that we want to, as a placeholder, to have out there, but may never come forward, but just that we, it's on our radar that we know this might be a future issue we'll have to address. And it, we, if we did have to address, it, it would take up considerable capital resources. If a project is in the year two, three, that means it's a project, we're actively working on the scoping of it, we're actively working on the planning of it, um, and we are getting ready to move that into year one, which would be a funded project, which would be the year, uh, you would start development on it. So, um, the intention is to be much more strategic about these projects and evaluate them, so that projects don't come in, in year one unless there's a major priority. So, for example, um, when I was working in a different district, we had Margaret Stoneman Douglas happened, and the superintendent wanted to move all of our projects that we were getting ready for safety and security into year one. That meant that anything we had already planned on year one had to get moved back. That was intentional, but it gave us an opportunity to communicate with our principals, with our board as to why we were making that decision. Um, and it was very open and transparent. It wasn't that they were just getting moved back for no reason, they understood why, uh, something had to be moved into year one. So, um, we're trying to be much more strategic, much more, uh, accountable about how we do that in terms of capital improvement plan. You will also have much more opportunity to provide input to us. You won't see this just at the end, you will see this starting, um, in October, and this won't, isn't just this year, but every October. We will confirm with you what your goals and objectives are for the capital plan, and also what your priorities for the coming year are. And then in June, January, February timeframe, you'll confirm your priorities, you'll start having a chance to give us some direction on projects we're thinking about. In the March timeframe, you'll see a schedule, that will, the first time you see just the budget component of it, but you'll see a five-year summary of what we're thinking. Then in the April timeframe, you'll see a draft of the full plan, and then you'll adopt it in June, and that's all then to feed into the capital budget. So you will have it, you will have multiple times to see that project. If it's a small project, these are projects under two hundred thousand dollars, um, they will be, and you saw a copy of the email that we sent out to directors and principals last week, these are opportunities for department heads and principals to provide us ideas of projects that they would like to have funded under two hundred thousand dollars. And we will evaluate those on an annual basis. So, uh, there is a specific timeframe within which both large and pro, small projects will be able to be solicited. This year, because we're starting the project late, it goes from now until Christmas. Next year, when we're back and where we are starting our full, real full, full rotation, it will start in, uh, August and go through the beginning of December, so it'll be moved up timeframe, which gives us more time to evaluate the projects. But we wanted to get started this year, we didn't want to wait another year, so we are doing a condensed version this year. Uh, if a project gets proposed out of time, we're going to tell them that they have to wait for the next cycle. So if somebody brings a project to us in March or April, we're going to say the window will open again in August, please resubmit at that point. Um, and then we will, if a project is under two hundred thousand, that's in our purview, we have the ability through the superintendent to sign off on those projects. And if a project get, does not get approved in a, in a given year, they will have to resubmit. It won't go into waiting. The principal will know that that project was not approved for this current year and that they're welcome to resubmit next year. And the reason we're doing that is because principals change, principal priorities change, um, so even a small project, which might be like a playground or a change in a room or something like that, may change so that they need to have the ability to, um, be flexible to that changes. Where a large project, those are campus, major campus project, major HVAC projects, um, a new campus, things like, things like that, um, those are things that we want to be more strategic in planning out in, in the five-year plan. That's the quick summary. Any questions?
That was good. On the small projects, under two hundred thousand, are, do the, the schools, the principals or whatever, um, look to have like local businesses to, to assist or, you know, fundraising or anything like that? Do you do that type of thing on the small projects?
They, they do in some cases. I mean, you know, I, we were out talking to some schools, uh, just this week, that they're working on trying to get shade structures for, uh, their playgrounds, and they're working with their local communities to raise dollars to do those types of projects.
And that's one of the goals of the Astero initiative as well, I wanted to throw that in there, okay.
They, they may, and, and on the application, there's an opportunity for tell, for them to tell us if this is to be funded completely with their own funds, if this is, they're looking for us to fund it, or if it will be a mix of funds. But either way, we're asking projects to come through our process, because we want to make sure that we get the right, um, evaluation of those projects, the right permitting of the right, because no matter what happens on our campus, they still have to meet forward a building code. So we want to have an opportunity to know what those projects are. So it doesn't matter the fa, funding source, we're asking them to come through our process. But obviously, if it's funded by us, we're going to look at it differently.
Some of you may remember the wrestling building at Riverdale.
We're not going there.
Originally was not SRF compliant, but, but is now.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so, um, the process is that, and the planning, how does that, uh, take into account things that might be, um, a little bit more of an emergency situation? So let me give you an example. Um, I was out of school yesterday, and they have new playgrounds, and we took some pictures and looked at all that, but there was a tree removed, but the stump was not. So now the stump is sticking up out of the mulch, and the kids are tripping on it. So is that something that you're going to say you have to wait till next year, or is that something that can be taken care of when the safety of the students is, is an issue?
So there's a difference between what we're talking about in terms of capital projects and ongoing maintenance of the campus.
Okay, okay.
Work, the work plan process, uh, the everyday work plan process is not part of this. They still would submit a work plan request through, to our facility maintenance department, who will take care of those issues on, in, on, on a needed basis.
Okay.
This is, this is not that kind of project. So something like that would absolutely be taken care of, if, if there's an electrical issue, or if there's a leak or something like this. This is, those, we're talking about, um, strategic improve, we're talking, and then that's why I like using the word improvement, this is improvements to the campus.
Okay.
These are things they don't have now, or they want to change made to the campus.
Right.
Um, that's, also rotational projects, like the, the, the.
Right.
Words, that's not part of this, rotational projects, like roofing projects, like painting projects, things that happen on, that are just part of our ongoing maintain, maintenance of the project, they, this, that's not what we're talking about here.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yes ma'am?
So if a school needs a cafeteria extended and walls taken out so that you can actually see the students walking in, what is that considered?
That is a large project. That would be evaluated as part of a large project.
That's considered a wish.
That, yes. Uh, that is, that is something that we would evaluate as part of the capital improvement plan for the large projects. It would go, I mean, uh, again, what we don't want to happen is for projects to come in, and, and I, I get that this happens all the time. Um, it, it happens not in school, just a school district, it happens in municipal and county governments, I've worked at all three levels. But what we're trying to do is be more strategic and be more accountable to our resources. So it doesn't mean a project couldn't come in, in year two or three, or even year one, if it's a really important thing and we hadn't caught it, but we would rather projects to come in somewhere in the three to five range and move up through the project, because we're balancing our budget resources that we project moving forward. Now, you know, there may be changes and we get more money than we're expecting, then that would be a windfall, we get new projects, we can move things ahead, but we're trying to balance the planning for our projects along with our resources, both financial and personnel.
And the reason I'm asking, because I've been going to many, many schools, and I always go to the cafeteria to see if there's, if it's open.
Right.
And this one school is definitely not open, and it's a middle school, and the kids are grown, they're like adults. So you're, they're going through, you can't see what's taking place behind those walls. And it looks like you just take a sledgehammer and tear it down.
I would recommend, um, that you let me know what that school is, and we'll work with that school to put in, put in for a project, for a project proposal.
I think it has been, but I will touch base with you.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's, that if it's the one I'm thinking of, uh, I know that we have.
It's an older school.
But I will let you know that any project that was on the old schedule needs to come in under the new schedule, and we have notified the principals of projects that we had in the, the old system to let them know that they would need to submit. So I just want to make sure that if there are projects out there that we're not aware of, that we make sure they get on the list before we do the evaluation.
I think you're aware of, well, I think they put in like a few years ago even, but it still hasn't taken place.
Right.
So I'll definitely get with you after.
Right, we just want to make sure it's current.
Okay, okay.
Is that the Ripples?
Yes.
We're aware of it. Fort Myers Middle.
All right, oh, yes, we are aware of, we'll just make sure that it's in the system.
Yeah, because there's just the two walls there, and then there's the other wall that could come down and it'd be extended, and now they have a bigger room.
Right, well, and again, um.
Weekend project.
So this year is going to be, this year is a test year for us, and, and, uh, she sat down, but Susan and I talked cabinet yesterday, um, our capital committee is very excited about this project. Um, and, and, uh, somebody wasn't in the room and heard us all laughing and being very loud and said, what are we being loud about? And we told them, we're like, oh, yes, we deserve, this is awesome. So our team is really, really excited about it, and, um, had, it comes, uh, I'll, I'll let you know that there have been people who have been looking for this kind of project. There was, Dominic used to, knew I had been working, or that myself and Mickey Ryan, who's the senior planner in Sarasota, had been working on this, and he had been at that trying to get us, to give him information on how about how to bring that forward here. So it's been in thought process for a long time, and we're excited to bring it, but in order to make it work, we're going to have to stick to the schedule, um, and, and be accountable to what we're doing. So we need to make sure the processes, the projects are getting into this, uh, getting on to our sheet, so that when we evaluate them in January, we have a holistic look, and somebody can't say we missed them.
I have one other question under operation, so you may, I, I, you may be able to answer it. On number six, uh, approval of the ranking for the building official services for K and NN. Um, the question is, last month, I think we received a letter from one of our, uh, business business partners that made a suggestion, uh, that we look into the selection process. I'm, I can't remember the, the name, okay.
Yeah, I'm aware of what you're talking about, but I think Susan is probably better handled to answer the question.
Well, and, and I'm just wondering, did we take those suggestions into consideration with this selection process?
So our, um, selection process that's in place now is relatively new. It was vetted with the board and with the community. Um, our construction partners came to multiple open events and presented their desires and wishes. Um, so we, we are rolling out, or have rolled out, hmm, maybe 18 months, two years we've been in this process, so it's time to take a look, how's it going? We're hearing feedback, we've heard some feedback, um, you know, um, we've received many positive letters about the improvements and the satisfaction with vendors. In fact, recently, we received a letter from a vendor that did not, uh, receive the award and was very excited with the process because he could see in place the requests that they had made. So those letters come forward, as well as one came forward making a suggested change for, um, increasing, um, local vendor, uh, participation points during the scoring process. That discussion was also held at the Construction Advisory Committee. So at our next Construction Advisory Committee, we will be, um, joining, um, and, and sharing ideas that we have. We are scheduled to meet with council to talk about how we can increase the local vendor participation, as well as the small, women and minority disadvantaged business participation in our process. So we are looking at that, we're taking into consideration the input from our community. And we will be, um, sharing with and hearing from the Construction Advisory Committee in early November. And then we would, um, come back to the board and share with you what we've learned, what, what we've heard and, uh, bring forward recommendations and, um, in, improve the process that we've recently put in place.
I just wanted to make sure that we had followed up with, I can't even remember the gentleman's name, if, um, that had sent the letter in with some suggestions. And to, you know, make sure that we validated that. And one other question, you mentioned the, um, uh, increasing the local vendors and that type of thing. Um, will our new, and this is probably to the superintendent, the new diversity, um, legal, uh, person that we'll have, did I understand that they would be helping with that as well?
I think the ones that are really going to be, um, our point people on that would be Frederick Ross, um, who's already, uh, moving this forward, and then Brian Williams. Brian Williams, uh, if you remember, worked in the economic development over, for Miami-Dade School District. He, he's like the, um, he, he's a real guru in this area as well. Uh, we had a, uh, recent meeting with the NAACP and again, those of you that attended the event, remember that, uh, President Walke Hill had mentioned his concern, uh, relative to, um, you know, the, the ability for small and minority businesses to be able to participate. So, uh, Mr. Williams has already done this type of work, uh, in, in other districts and, and Mr. Ross is also very familiar with this type of work. And so they, um, I think more than adequately answered his questions. Uh, he was, I think, very happy and satisfied that we were already moving, uh, this process forward. So, um, those are your two key people. The person that's going to be hiring, be hired in that position, uh, is mainly going to be focused on, um, civil rights issues and doing investigations relative to that. Uh, and I, I know as well, there'll be a training component for our administrators, so you're trying to wor- reduce the number of OCR complaints and things like that. And that's, that's going to be that person's primary focus. Uh, and I think Mr. Williams has a very, very good candidate there that will be, uh, that we will be moving forward in the near future. But the two point people on this project, uh, and Susan, please correct me if I'm wrong, but Frederick Ross and, and Brian Williams.
That's correct. And in fact, um, in advance of, as we started our goals for this year, that was one of the procurement department's, um, goals, was to evaluate small business participation, local vendor preference, um, participation. And Mr. Ross has that as his department goals. So we were on that, aware of that, on it before we received that information, um, addressing that from the community.
And I, I will add to the, um, to my fellow board members that, uh, the vote that we took at our last meeting, uh, changing some of the, the requirements for local, um, vendors, I think will also help tremendously and thank you for, for passing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions under operations, anyone? Okay, if nothing else, we have finished the agenda review and board comments? Ms. Fisher, would you like?
No, I have no comments right now, thank you.
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, fine.
No, thanks.
Yes?
No, thanks.
This is unusual. We're just getting better and better every time, shorter meetings and, I know, I know, it's still early, right? Okay, I think that that covers all of our agenda review, the only thing on our agenda this morning for workshop. And we will, um, adjourn at this time. Can I ask for a, do I, do we need to vote? Nope?
No.
Okay, so we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.